I move that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel and legal matters.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion? All in favor? That is everyone who is present. We will be back at seven o'clock with folks, once we fix that clock somehow. Very much. We are returning from executive session and we will move on with our agenda. Uh, I imagine there are no modifications to the agenda. Fantastic. Bring us right to public comments. Do we have anyone who signed up? No one has signed up. So then I would assume there is no board responses and it brings us to our student reps. And it's been a meeting since last time. So I forgot who went first last time. So.
LACS went first.
Thank you, Maura. So Ithaca High School, how are you? Good to see everybody. Yes, and please do speak into the microphone when you can.
Um, so just yesterday, we had a meeting with Mr. Trumbull. So we talked about a couple of things. Um, some things just in general, we wanted a longer table in H4 yard and that was secured today. So that was really great. Um. And then in general, we were talking about like resources for teaching in classrooms, like tissues. Um, and Mr. Trumbull kind of cleared some things up uh for us on that. Uh, in general things that IHS, we had social justice week. That was last. Yes, um, we had social justice week. Last week that was a huge success. Uh, lots, lots of classes went to different presentations. Um, it was really good. The presentations were super fantastic. I went to uh two for my gov class. So that was really great. Um. And yeah, also we're looking forward to eclipse day for and um, I guess next to next Monday.
Uh, to highlight a few more things we talked to Mr. Trumbull about. One is having a safety procedure for fire drills and lockdowns during universal lunch. So this concern was raised when students did not have an idea on what the procedure was when the fire alarm acts actually rang during universal lunch a couple of months ago. Um, so once there is a plan written up, uh, we're hoping that drills will be initiated. Um, so people know what they're doing. Um, and we also had a conversation surrounding Chromebooks and related technology. So we discussed the need to improve Go Guardian and find alternatives for monitoring student screens during classes. As well as general ways to improve restrictions and blocking on blocking mechanisms on websites that are currently done through the school wifi. Um, we also recognize that a large portion of the student body use personal devices. And so it leaves many school issued Chromebooks to be unused and just sitting at home for the whole school year. Uh, we suggested that these unused Chromebooks would be returned to the school in some way and redistributed to classrooms that need extra devices or just make them available as loaners to students who need them.
So, so one more thing we talked about with Mr. Trumbull was the water fountains. So the water fountains for the past year or so, depending on the time of the day and the location, the temperature can be really wonky. Sometimes you'll actually get really hot water fountain water, which is disturbing for students when they're trying to fill up their water bottles. And uh, Mr. Trumbull said he's going to be investigating this. So we might come back with more information at a later time, but it might have something to do with the location of the boilers and the pipes as they pass through there and heat being conducted through the pipes to different parts of the school. So that was just a one theory that was floating around. Uh, Ithaca had our first tennis match and we won. So that was fun. Thank you. Yes. Uh, there was also a big chamber recital that's been being planned in the works for the last couple of months uh on last Saturday. At the IHS choir room and that was a great success. A lot of big student performers. Uh, cabaret, which happened last Friday was also really good. There were a number of uh, student shows mostly from orchestra students, but a few singing acts and et cetera. And finally, something that we're looking forward to, the student council has been is organizing the international fair, which is going to take place on April 15th hopefully. And we're currently in the process of recruiting signups, getting people to join. And we're hoping to have a good number of booths that will function on a carnival style basis in a couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you, Ithaca High School, LACS.
A group of seniors and juniors have banded together to take on the project of reviving our school's garden. The plan is to rebuild wooden pathways, uh, rebuild compost bins, uproot native species and plant native plants.
So in spite of the closure on the eighth, uh, the LACS science department is providing an opportunity for students to travel to Oswego and see the eclipse in its totality. Uh, this will be a great chance for those who might not be able to drive out there themselves to see this extraordinary event. And as well, it provides some childcare opportunities for parents who might have to work that day.
Friday is the infamous senior prank day at our school. The seniors are spending Thursday night at LACS tastefully decorating the school for the students and staff to enjoy the next morning.
Uh, so two Thursdays ago, a few junior, uh, sorry, our juniors and a few seniors presented their English PBats. Uh, as far as I know, they all went well. Mine sure did. Um. And last week we had our infusion week, which was consent based this year. And on Friday, we had a in consent rocks concert led by our students.
And lastly, the second issue of the chestnut is out and I brought more than two copies this time. So anyone like to get them, here they are.
Thank you. Uh, board responses. Yes, Jill.
The last person to know this, but I picked up a copy of the Tadler. Um, a few days ago and it was startled to see that we have the entire editorial board here with us, everybody. So so those of you who didn't know that. These are our, our leading, among our leading journalists at IHS.
Is the Tadler digital only?
No, that's how I picked it up. It is.
Old school?
Oh, yeah. You can find it various places in town.
Yeah. What about this? Yeah.
Yes, in the school, we don't, we don't print very many copies.
Uh, we can work to make sure that maybe board members get copies uh at meetings in the future. We'll, we'll work with folks to make that happen.
And I'll show everyone how you can take paper and sort of turn it.
It is a, it is a special skill set.
Um, I would say I like the idea of Chromebook inventory management. I think that rings true for a lot of people not using it. I really like that. Um, glad to hear presentations went well. And uh, warm water is very European. So.
I would say, and I, I was an evaluator for the PBats and they were fantastic.
Well, you made it.
Uh, yeah, yeah. And I've done it several times before. Uh, Catherine was there too. Ms. Talcott was there too. Mr. Lind was there too. Um, and it was, I was so impressed. I, I think they've gotten better uh, over the years. Um, and particularly I like, I like the rubric that uh has been developed and it's developed as part of the, is it the consortium of uh, performance based schools? Anyway, so uh, really, really good. And I'm really excited about revising, revising the garden because I live across the street. So I'll get to enjoy it. Thank you.
Additional board comments, reactions? Um, as always, thank you very much to our reps. Fantastic. We'll keep on with our agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. And we will entertain more things.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented in its entirety.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Jill. Uh, discussion, questions, conversations?
I just will comment, uh, cause I was, I was also a, um, a judge for the IPEI spelling bee a couple of weeks ago. And I commented to members of the board who were there, members of the IPE board, how every single meeting we seem to be uh, accepting money from IPEI. So it's really terrific.
I second that as well. Additional questions, comments?
Hello. Hello fearless leader. I have one question about six point nine. Resolution authorized board president superintendent injured or health and welfare agreements from Horsehead Central School District to receive health and welfare services. That's not something I'm used to seeing that we are receiving service. I'm used to us providing services. Um, someone just hip us to what that's about?
So health and welfare services, depending on the directionality, right? Wherever the, the school building um resides, either in whatever community, right? If it's a non-parentally placed student that goes there, if it's a charter school, right? Or if that the district places that student. If, if that's, if our students go to a school that is in a particular district, we owe them money for health and welfare. And that's typically related services like nursing, um, PTOT speech, right? It would be things that might be listed in IEP. Um, and if the school building is in our boundaries and the student comes from another district, we bill them and they pay us. So that's how those relationships work. So you'll see that back and forth.
So these are, these are, these are private schools or private placements?
These are, these are, um, these are either school district placed or charter schools. So these are, right? So that's what we do, non-parentally placed.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented? All opposed? And I will abstain. Uh, that continues on with our agenda and that brings us to uh, the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown, good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well. And thanks for the opportunity to share uh, two important items tonight I wish to share. The first would be Tricia, can you show, I want to show off our newly released equity report card. And I see Karen, I see Mr. Harris, I see you professor. Um, the members of our community who've spent twenty plus years uh, holding the school district accountable and doing so by making a data, data available. Um, I was here, this was a tool that attracted me to this community because you were the only community in the country at the time that was making this kind of information available to the community in a way where the community could see it and talk about it and learn. Um, and you know, in my grad program at the University of Virginia, we were studying at the, what we were doing there because it was pretty uh remarkable. But the paper document has evolved to now being one that's uh, digital. And still to this day, um, uh, it's why people approach me at conferences each time we go. No one is putting out information in this type of a way and calling it an equity report card, where we are making our data publicly available to everyone. And now we are a lot, we have a tool we've developed thanks to Lynn, uh, Lynn Klinkowski and our team that we've developed a tool that allows folks to manipulate and use, move the data around to answer the questions they may have. So this is done in partnership with our community. Um, the shout out to the EIOC. Um, it's gotten better. Not only now is it digital, but there are strategies and narratives associated with each individual metric about what we're doing, how we've been doing, where the trends are going. And we're honest, you know, as part of our culture of love, we're honest with one another about what's happening and what's not and what we're doing to make it better. So you know, I will see when there used to be a press conference where we would bring in the community leaders and we would really uh, announce that this was available and we would take questions. Um, we don't do a press conference anymore, but I don't want people to miss that this is continually being updated. And again, we welcome the questions that folks may have as they navigate and look at the data. Again, thank you to the founders and for the folks who continue to put a lot of time and effort into putting such a document together. That's the equity report card I wanted to make sure folks knew about. The other one, you know, equally as exciting. Um, we have a bit of a Spork retention program that's going on in our school district. Uh, there's a lot of conversations about sports. And uh, we, our communications team has gone so far as to have a campaign. Because not only we're going to have a sports retention program, but we're going to put a positive spin on our ability to retain sports.
My apologies. I thought you were saying sports. You're saying sports.
Sports. You, you must have missed the laugh.
Thank you very much. That makes much more sense.
S P O R K S.
Sports.
Did the southern accent get in the way of sports and sports?
We're all on the same page now, Doc. Start over again.
Start over here because I was slowing there. This is not March Madness in basketball. This is sports. S P O R K S. And yes, we're doing it in conjunction with March Madness so that folks will pay attention. But we are retaining sports in this bad boy. And we now have a program where we've developed posters to, that we hope to be in all of our buildings to inspire folks to retain sports. And we want our community, particularly our young people, to go to Instagram and vote on your favorite Spork poster. Did I slow that down fast?
That down fast enough. Yes, you did.
So folks can keep up with me right now. But anyway, go to Instagram and check out the uh, March Madness, Sweet Sixteen and log your vote for the poster of your desires. And we will make sure that's the one that we print and place in all of our buildings because we're serious about sport retention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would you also uh, mention somehow our manager finding how to find the equity report card on our website?
Uh, and that's something we probably can put a button or a news alert on our header. Uh, if you go to about us or, or accountability. You should accountability metrics. It should be there along with other data that we capture. But we will probably put a banner and a button for folks to easily accept, get access to it.
And I'll just reiterate, I'll actively invite our uh, various community members to engage with the um, equity report card. Yes, it has a long history. Uh, and the uh, level of information as someone who spends most of their day looking at educational data um, is pretty remarkable for a school district to do. There is always the New York State report cards. Um, usually on a year or so delay, sometimes a two-year delay. Folks can use those, but it does not have the granual level of detail that we provide for folks to find information in. Um, and people should look at it and let us know what you're finding. So we can continue to improve in various ways and make accommodations when they're um, required as well. So thank you for that. Thank you for the folks who keep continuing that work. Um, we will keep our agenda moving.
And I will invite some friends down to join me.
Um, while we're transitioning, um, Dr. Brown, for those of us who may not have Instagram, can we still vote on our Spork retention posters? The answer is no. Pencil and paper.
It's, it was a subtle uh, tug at you all to join Instagram, but team, what can we ask folks to do if not on Instagram?
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll send out something.
And to find the report card, you can also just Google ICSD equity report card and it's the first link. Okay, thank you.
Uh, this brings us to our next agenda item, which is school business, which is the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget presentation.
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity again. And we look forward to this presentation conversation every year. And I've asked Chief Operations Officer Amanda Burba to join and Lily Talke, our deputy superintendent as well. And again, as I was reflecting on this presentation, there were years when this presentation would take a couple of hours. Um, and it would be new information for folks and it would be new learning for folks and we would spend a lot of time talking. That's changed over the years because we have committed to doing an year-round annual budgeting process. And tonight I really do wish to focus on the funding request, but not only the funding request, but the why and the how associated with the funding request. As folks are see, uh, going to be out, going out to vote on our budget in the near future. I'm hoping that they look back on this presentation and understand why we're proposing it. And as always, this is the slide we've used for the last thirteen sessions of this presentation. Because everything we're proposing is connected to our vision and mission, which is a very bold and audacious one to produce a community of thinkers. And that vision is something, you have to do something over and over again to achieve that. And we've said we would engage, educate and empower. And I hope you see elements of how we hope to engage our entire community, educate the young people in twenty twenty four and empower everyone in the organization through our funding requests and all other mechanisms. And you know, this is a new one. Maybe this is the slide that would replace that previous one. Because this is well done. This is what we mean by a year-round budgeting process and what goes into our funding requests and how and why much of what I'm going to share tonight is not going to be new to the board or the community because we've been talking about this a lot. And we talk about when we talk about things, in this document, it notes when we talk about things, you see the dates there. But I really want to focus in on that uh, middle section, the red one, and then the yellow one. Because that middle section, that, those are our priorities. And as a person who's lived in this community for many years now, I hear about the community's priorities and their wishes when it comes to our schools. Our community expects small neighborhood schools. I'm coming from a community that did not expect or want that. And we had one centralized location for all elementary students. Cheaper. But not what our community wants. And we know that small elementary school, not only do we want, do we favor and want small elementary schools, we want small class sizes. And that's something our community has valued and has asked for over and over and over again. We are a community that has some of the best co-curricular offerings in the nation and our community values that. Um, strings, music offerings at third grade. Uh, hundreds of clubs at our high school and co-curricular opportunities where young people are competing uh, for championships all over our state. Successfully in an ongoing way. That is a value um, of our community, one that we have to fund, but it's something our community wants. But I could go through each one of these, but I want folks to know what we proposed in previous years and what we're proposing in this budget supports our community's priorities. Now that next section, that goal one, those are, we used to call them constraints. We used to call them, what do we call them now? Expenditure. Let's call these drivers. Yeah, I used to like the driver or levers. These are the things that we must account for when we're developing a budget. Yeah, uh, debt service, our capital projects, how we're going to fund in a continuous way, the improvements that are needed to our buildings, professional development, recruitment and retention. Contractual obligations that have been made previously and our plans for contractual obligations for the future. You see, that goal one, those are the constraints, the drivers, the expenditures. And during my time here, I've never seen anything come off of that list or the previous one. This community has never come to this table with me or in Wegmans when I'm shopping for produce and asked for us to take anything off of this list. I have heard at every meeting, people asking to add things. So I think that's going to be important as we get into later conversations about this budget and this funding request, that we're a community that if, if someone told me when I transitioned into this job expects excellence. And oftentimes we struggle with recognizing when we get it. We are an excellent school district and we have asked for that and we're getting it and we're paying for it in an ongoing way. And so then we'll transition to uh, this one here. Most, as we were transitioning through a pandemic and then we're post pandemic, we, we committed to the things on the previous slide around what it is we want. And we've asked for it to evolve and to enhance what we do. And we're calling that learning forward I C S D. And I don't have you know, curriculum committee has been talking a lot about our vision and mission when it comes to teaching and learning in the school district. But I want folks to know that this budget is supporting our efforts to really truly implement in an authentic way, our learning forward I C S D initiative. And we'll just highlight just a couple of things that I want our community to make sure I make sure our community knows are in this budget. Uh, we've heard a lot about restorative practices and restorative training. It required, we have a new code of conduct policy. And last year of this, we were in year zero. And as folks stressed when we were rolling that out, there needs to be some professional development associated with it. And specifically around restorative practices and training. This budget supports that type of training and that professional development so that we can implement it with fidelity. We, for maybe the first time, we will, we're seeking to have a common ELA curriculum. Something our curriculum committee has asked for, people in our community have asked for, we want to shift the numbers when it comes to our equity report card. This budget is going to support the development that's going to be needed for us to implement that program district wide. When we think about structures of support, our commitment to inclusion here is unlike any other place I've found in the nation. And we're, we need to have a lot of work to do. We have a lot to improve, but we are committed to it. And I need to stress to our community, it costs, it's expensive. And it does require, as Jill, Dr. Tripp said in one of our previous meetings, it requires more people and it requires FPA. That is just a fact. So if we're committed to it, we must fund it. If we're going to do it in an authentic way, otherwise we just have frustration. This budget supports that. Other systems of support, you know, practice innovation, I was here at this table when we had to make the hard decision not to do summer program. Remember that? So we've since then grown it to a very robust and inclusive program with over a hundred young people, more than that, three hundred. Three hundred plus young people participating in a truly inclusive and innovative summer program in this school district and we funded it. And I put, you know, structures for, we could go, we could spend another whole session on just the ways in which we support our employees or endeavoring to support our employees even in retirement. So many of our employees who've spent, a many, a many, I'm looking at some folks at the table here, who've spent a long time in our school district, they are receiving healthcare benefits in retirement. And this board has made decisions to even enhance that over the come, over the last couple of years, based on feedback from the community. But I need to remind folks that cost. Uh, we're trying to quantify how much that costs. And we may have a number for you. Just talk, talk about just that decision to support our community and our retirees costs us money. And to do that in a continual way will cost us money each and every year. So I could go on here, but as we paint this picture and as we now start to shift to showing numbers, I want folks to know that this budget is going to support the stuff that we've committed to, that we want to do. Uh, and I remind folks, nobody's asking us to stop doing anything. They're asking us to do more. So in summary, this budget that we're proposing will meet, I am confident as the instructional leader of this community, um, that the budget I'm proposing to this evening will meet the needs of our learners. It will take work. It will be hard, but it will meet the needs of our learners. I am proposing a budget because I was asked this, I was challenged, I was acquired to. And I'm going to use the language that was used with me fourteen years ago, stabilize the tax rate, Dr. Brown. Because prior to me, the tax rate had fluctuated. And folks were unsure about what tax rate to, they would expect from the school district, lower, higher, but it were fluctuations. I was asked to stabilize it and not to raise it, if that makes sense. I guess you were asking two things at the same time. Don't raise taxes. And stabilize. We, and we heard from the Thompson County accessory in this seat not long ago. We're, he was asking us to stabilize the tax rate because he said that would be beneficial to the businesses and community members if they knew and for the foreseeable future, what the tax rate would be. I'm going to come back to that later. This budget we're proposing will allow for us to stabilize the tax rate and keep it low. And see, this budget is allowing, I've now gone through uh, multiple iterations of contract negotiations. And I can say, I can quantify it. I can have the artifacts and receipts. We have seen the most significant compensation increases in this school district's history over the last decade. Now that's taken a lot of work. We've committed to some things. We have six-year contracts, but we We have six-year contracts, but we did some things. So we, this budget would allow for us to continue to meet those contractual obligations. And I've said very publicly, it's no secret, I'm looking to do even more because folks have asked us to do more. We need to pay our educators more to recruit and retain. That is a priority for this board, is a priority for this community. This budget allows us to do that. I've floated in this room twenty percent over three years. If this budget passes, I feel very strongly that we can do that. Now, they say twenty-one percent. And I know you said, but so we were talking about between twenty and twenty-one, but I don't want to be talking about ten or zero, which some communities in our state right now are talking about because of what I'm going to share here in a second. There is no new dollars coming in from our federal or state governments. And I'm doing a Professor Brad, I'm just going to pause for a pedagogical technique there. There are no new money. Many school districts are having this conversation tonight and they're talking about five, six, ten million dollar reductions to their budgets because of the loss of federal and state aid. We are seeing a reduction as well too. Now, we can be having a similar conversation to my colleagues in other small cities and talking about program reductions, um, larger class sizes and closing schools. And I'm proposing a budget that won't have us engage in that conversation. Because we're going to absorb the loss of significant federal and state aid. And then finally, uh, I've also been here when we had a very little utilization of our fund balances in years where we've had to use way more than we were comfortable with. So much so where it impacted our bond rating. We're itching closer to taking too much out again, and I'm going to share with y'all in a minute where we've been the last few years to try to get through a pandemic, to minimize the impact on taxpayers and other reasons. But we've used our fund balances very strategically in partnership with external consultants to make sure we're using it in a way where we can recover, where we're not impacting our bond rating. And if a unfunded mandate were to come down like electric buses, we could accommodate that need without significantly fluctuating the tax rate. Again, if quoting me and if talking about numbers connected to our budget proposal, I hope that folks can quote me and talk about what I just shared. Because what we're proposing is connected to those priorities, to those expenditures and that strategic vision that this board and community has had and what you've asked us to do. Now, if shifting from that strategic priority and those wishes, that's the conversation I'm looking forward to engaging in, but I am operating on the path that we've been on that has produced some of the best achievement in the country and a school district that is excellent. Therefore, our uh budget proposal, the total dollar amount that I'm putting in front of you to consider is a hundred and seventy million dollars, nine hundred and thirty-five. And I, and not like the saying, I can't make this an even number at the end, but three hundred and seventy-one dollars, all right? We've tried for fourteen times and we can't make it, we can't make it even. And that you'll see from year to year, the increase from year to year. Now, if we want to compare that to other school districts, other local, other taxing entities, we can do that at some point. But I'm just sharing with you the trend and what that number is for us. Another data slide, data point I'll put up, if this will work. Oh, well, hold it. At the time, the annual, let's stop and let Amanda explain the difference between the tax rate and tax levy so that I can this year go south.
Hello, everyone. Just a reminder, I'm Amanda Verba, I'm the Chief Operations Officer. Um, I really appreciate Dr. Brown putting this information together um over, you know, sort of representing all the things that we've done. One of the things that we've tried to really educate the community about is um the way that our revenue um comes to our school district. That's through our tax levy. That's the major amount of our revenue. It's the major source of revenue for the district. It's the major funding portion of that one hundred and seventy million dollar expenditure budget that we have. A levy represents the total amount of taxes that is needed to operate uh the school district. Right? Municipalities have a levy, we have a levy, city entities have a levy. Um, ours is the one that gets voted on, right? Our budget gets voted on. Other municipalities um and entities don't have to take their budgets to the voters. The tax levy, as Dr. Brown has stated, is again those operating dollars that we will put with our state aid once those numbers are finalized. Um, our other miscellaneous revenue, we described that in detail at Finance Committee and also our um fund balance and reserves as that balance. The tax rate, on the other hand, right, is um part of an equation that takes into account um the total assessed value um of the community, right? And that dollar amount per one thousand of assessed value for your own properties, land, your own um things that you own, um businesses, the amount of their assessed value. And that is used to calculate a yearly tax bill. So you take your assessed value of what your property ownership is and you put that over the total assessed value of the Ithaca City School District community proper and that gets us a tax rate. And again, that fluctuates because we don't know what the total assessed value is at this moment in time. So for us to have some predictability around that tax rate allows for us to let community members think about what they're budgeting, what they're looking forward to in the future based on their own attack assessed value.
Thank you, Ms. Burba. Always so super well done. These next week's slides are just, I'm just going to share numbers and where we've been and where we're, what we're proposing in this budget. Um, and you'll see this slide represents the tax levy and historical look at our tax levy. Again, assessments have changed, uh, more properties have come onto our tax roll. Be should be anticipating that number to shift and be shifting in connection to assessed values and shifting connected to inflation. You'll see that I, where we anticipate the tax levy being this year than the hundred and twenty million dollar number. You'll see also the years in which we've had to override what is called or referred to as a tax cap in this community. And we've had to override on several occasions here, oftentimes when we're, when there's a significant reduction in state and federal aid. And uh when our budget increases or our budget, overall budget is increasing um at a rate that's higher than uh what the tax cap formula is putting out. And that formula is an interesting formula. So you'll see also that we, we would anticipate that this year would require a tax override based on the formula and that number. Our tax cap number is around three percent, right, three point three percent. Our budget, to have a conversation about staying within the cap would look like us making a reduction of about eleven million dollars. Nine million dollars uh to what we've been planning to do already. I just want folks to hear that. Um, our tax, that cap, tax cap number that is generated through an algorithm and a formula is for us this year would be at three percent. If keeping our tax levy at a three percent increase, then we're talking about a nine million dollar reduction to what we're proposing this evening. That's programs, that's people, that's a significant shift. And that's not keeping up with even our contractual obligations, which none of our contractual obligations are in the three percent range. That's tax levy. Then I will shift here and this is a slide I, you know, up until most recently, I was somewhat proud of this slide, um, being able to say that I was able to lower the tax rate in our community. Um, because that was important. That's what I was asked to do, uh, to not have it, you know, because of the fluctuations, because of the loss of federal and state aid, because of the ways in which we were doing budgeting more on an annual basis, not instead of a multi-year basis. We had some fluctuations eighteen, um, eighteen for a couple of years. Um, we wish to and we plan to stabilize it at the sixteen twenty-two for the next three to five. We're definitely promising three as we talk about it today and that will be big and that's what we've been asked to do. Um, and that would be a tax rate that was lower than the day I arrived. And then a question I anticipate and one that we need to talk about is our utilization of fund balance. Um, I mentioned the importance of us um very strategically using our fund balance and I mentioned the importance of us reducing our reliability on fund balance. Last year, we used the highest amount of fund balance in the history of our school district to balance the budget and to continue our transition beyond a pandemic to make sure we didn't hurt too much with the loss of federal and state aid. To make sure we kept the programs in place, the mental health supports, the staffing supports, the substitute supports, all those supports that we had in place during pandemic, we wanted to keep because we knew if we poured those away quickly, that that would have a significant negative impact on our school community. So we dipped into fund balance to make sure we maintain that. Um, we can't do that every year. It's a pick, it's a bank um for the folks who keep a savings account. Once you take it out, you can't, you have to replenish it or it's no longer the same savings account. So we have proposed a five million dollar reduction in our fund balance to balance the budget this year. And then I'll get to uh some important dates. Tonight's a big, big conversation. You're hearing what we've heard in previous meetings. Again, nothing new here, but we also are looking forward to engaging our community in this very important dialogue about this budget presentation, budget proposal. And you'll see the dates there. We're going to have a community conversation at G I A C in April. We will, we're going to have another one at the Danby Fire Hall in May. The annual budget hearing will be in this room, I anticipate on the fourteenth. And then you see the budget vote and elections on the twenty-first. Important dates coming up. And what will folks be voting on, what will be asking folks to vote on those days? The proposition one is always the budget. So we're keeping a score at home, that's the budget. You'll see the budget proposal and the number that the board eventually adopts, whatever that number may be. Proposition two, folks have seen this in the past, will be uh giving us the authorization to dip into our uh reserve funds to purchase ultra-low emission buses, electric buses and other vehicles that we're using to transport young people. A very important proposition for us this year. And then this one is very huge for us too. My perspective, you've heard me say it at this table. This uh proposition number three, this bond resolution of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars sets this community up with this most valuable asset, um, our buildings for the next decade. Period. I'm trying to talk, I don't do it as good as you, but I want to pause. That's an important thing to say. We can plan for and the board will have authorization to spend up to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to do capital project improvements and enhancements and fixes for the next decade with this approval.
Can I, can I ask you, Dr. Brown, to have Amanda explain to the public how that bonding works and what we actually wind up paying? Because over the years, I'm sure we've all gotten a comment. If you're so broke, how can you afford a hundred and twenty-five million dollars?
Our debt service line of our expenditure budget tracks our principal and interest payments on monies that we've borrowed, either long-term borrowing over, you know, ten years or short-term borrowing, five years, for capital projects that we have planned and already um taken on and already have constructed. And so essentially, just like your mortgage, right, you borrow these funds and you pay it back over the course of time. As that debt drops off, meaning that you've paid that portion of debt in full. It's what you do as you, each summer, as we go to do our builds, right, and our construction, that's when sort of all the costs go up, that's when you will go out for borrowing. And that's tracked on a schedule. So the twenty seventeen borrowing is tracked and the twenty eighteen borrowing is tracked and the twenty nineteen borrowing is tracked. Each one of those, Eldra, depending on the year, it could be we borrowed seventeen million that summer. One year we might borrow eleven million, one summer we might borrow twenty-two million. It is all tracked as debt falls off and we replace it with new debt to continue the capital project work. Our commitment with this capital project, along with the others, is that we maintain the debt service line of the expenditure budget on or about seven percent of the total budget, right, as we move forward. So that again, the community understands that we've committed to keeping our buildings being remodeled and try to be updated and innovative and also correct end-of-useful-life situations like roofs that are no longer out, you know, under warranty, paving that has really been become problematic. All of those things that are super glamorous and maybe just septic systems, right? And we have to do that. And so that is why we maintain that predictable portion of our budget. It also is a factor in our tax cap. Keeping that flat and knowing what that portion of our debt service is helps us with our tax cap. Because you actually get to um exclude some of those costs for capital. It also helps us track our, our building aid, which is actually a revenue stream. In New York State, when you spend money on your capital projects, on your buildings, you get money reimbursed to you over also a ten to fifteen-year period, depending on the project. And so that all works together for us in this like sort of well-oiled machine. This proposition three takes the current capital project that we have and allows for a seamless transition to the next phases of the capital project planning. So we'll sort of start again from phase one, we're now in phase four to Capital Project twenty twenty-four, phase one, phase, you know, three, four, five. And just like that summer projects that we've been seeing, we'll just be able to seamlessly roll into those um just acquiring debt as needed and paying that off accordingly.
One more question for clarity. So I often get questions asked also, well, who decides which of these expensive propositions you take on? Almost as if we're deciding as a group to deck the halls with gold flake. Where does the impetus for making these repairs come from?
Well, I, I can tell you that everyone should tune into facilities committee meetings. I don't want to speak for the facilities committee chair. We, we spend tremendous amounts of time talking about prioritization of um things that have reached their end of useful life as well as innovation educational, teaching and learning goals that we have. And many of those things overlap, right? We, when we have reached the end, end of a useful life of a boiler and we're no longer comfortable in our teaching and learning spaces, we look at something like geothermal. So that that way we can replace a fossil fuel boiler with something that's green and we have the opportunity to do it and we leverage nicer of funding to be able to try to get some rebates back. All of those things happen at the same time. We also have things like iconic places like our Fall Creek Playground that there are elements to that that tug at our heartstrings and say, they have given us so much joy and so much fabulous, wonderful opportunities with my own child. And we hug it and we say thank you and we have to replace it because it's no longer a structure that we would want to support play on. But we take student voices and incorporate them in the design progress and the process and they tell us what the twenty twenty-four and future needs are for play at the Fall Creek Playground, honoring the beautiful iconic elements of it. And so we'll hear that in just two weeks. We'd like to hear those voices about that. So how does prioritization happen? Everything is a priority to someone and then there are tremendous stakeholder ebb and flow of that process of moving that up or down in sort of the queue. And um, you know, to date, I think we've, we've done some really wonderful projects that balance both health and safety, security, um, maintenance and operations as well as innovation. I think we've done a great job also in every area of our campus has been touched. That's the other piece too. Every building, we have to make sure that they get the right opportunity to be in that queue.
Above and beyond the um safety considerations that have taken um every building and the innovation. Um, I know we've also, and you may have mentioned this and if you did, I apologize, but a focus on sustainability as well. Right? And sort of trying to find ways in which to make our buildings much more energy efficient. To think about our envelopes of our building, air filtration, obviously during COVID. So there's a host of things that are required um and things that we're also paying attention to to make sure the long-term health of the buildings. And for folks who may not know, at one point in time, I believe, I forget what presentation it was, but put out a document. Um, some of our school buildings are more than a hundred years old. And so there's uh something for us to consider about education and spaces um with technology that was around a hundred years ago and then trying to retrofit them literally for a twenty-first century context. But, but thank you for that.
Absolutely. And equally important is, is all student voices and all staff voices for inclusion efforts to make sure that everyone feels that when they enter a space, they belong there too.
Quick question. You sure? I wasn't trying to silence. Now we know it's going to be a long one.
We got you. It won't be long. I don't know, complicated responses. Uh, sorry, I might have missed something. I'm just out of curiosity. So you're saying basically we pay back our previous debt with more debt, which we take on. Um, I guess that would by necessity mean that our debt increases, but that's okay because we're keeping it at below seven percent of the total budget, right? But what happens if the total budget dips? If the total budget dips, then we can't keep it at under seven percent because we're just continuously borrowing more and more to pay back the previous year.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't borrow.
Okay.
We wouldn't borrow. We would have to, so we have a fiscal advisor that um tracks every single, you know, term of borrowing, right? Um, we would look at what's most advantageous for the district in that year. Um, in that year, we might, you know, really limit um what we would do in the summer. So for example, that year you might only borrow maybe like seven million worth or, or um, you know, five million worth versus another summer, you might have borrowed twenty-one million, right? And so you time that up depending on, again, you look at interest rates. And so you time that up depending on, again, you look at interest rates. You look at like how much is dropping off. So some years, that's why you can do a little bit more than others. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to say like you, you borrow to pay off. You've borrowed that, we're paying it off with, with our budget, right? But then as that drops off and it's paid off, you then borrow again. So it's just sort of this like replacement cycle so that you're forever able to, to do the good work with, with the buildings. We have a million square feet, right? So it takes a lot to maintain them, not just daily. Because we have, we also have a maintenance budget that we use and operating a maintenance budget for the daily stuff. But this is sort of just like the real replacement refurbishment opportunities that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also just add, you're really great at reminding everybody that any, anytime there's a bond resolution, the number that's placed on any school district's bond resolution that goes out to voters, it gives the authority for a school district to borrow up to that number.
Over the course of a
Over the course of many years, right? So because it's up to that number, you don't always have to go to that number if there's say a financial crisis or a pandemic or, right? So in case there's some sort of emergency, it's just that authority to reach that ceiling potentially. It was a good question.
I want to reiterate that point because I think sometimes that point gets lost, right? That the bond resolution is a pre-authorization up to a certain amount. And if you look at our previous bond resolutions, there are times when we've come quite close to that amount and times where we have not. And it also helps again for long-term planning. And as Dr. Brown said, I think one thing, and this is not my area of expertise, but I'm trying to learn as much as I possibly can. Our bond rating also has a significant impact in saving us money long-term. It's like, you know, the lower the interest rate to borrow, the more money you save. And so the better financial status that we're in and demonstrate that we're stable and secure. It gives us an opportunity to do twenty-five-year planning for things like deferred maintenance, which if we look at what our deferred maintenance costs were to do all things, it would well exceed a hundred and twenty-five million, right? So we're not doing every deferred maintenance thing that's been recommended. We're choosing the necessities along with innovation, safety, inclusion, sustainability, et cetera. So thank you for that point, Mr. Talk. I think that's a key thing.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, quick question for information purposes for everyone in the public. So what percentage of our budget is paid for by the tax levy? Our taxpayers' contributions?
It's, it's upwards of, we're usually over seventy-five percent of our budget comes from the local tax levy.
Right. And how does that compare to other school districts in our region?
Almost inverted.
Right. I mean, you, Dr. Brown sees many more superintendents and hears their tales of woe about the state aid impact to them.
I would dare say some of our neighboring districts, actual share of border, it's almost a direct inverse. Right? Where seventy-five percent is coming from federal and state dollars and twenty-five percent is coming from the local tax levy. But again, it depends on community by community.
That's true.
I have a quick question. So it seems like there's a sense among some members of the public more recently that the district's budget, the amount that we are levying was made, was decided on after the, after the actual tax assessments were adjusted for this year. So can you speak to maybe more of like the bottom-up process of the actual budget development? Just very, very briefly, just to clarify the timing of our budget development vis a vis recent adjustments in property assessments?
That, this is a great question. And I think it's a reiteration that, that we spoke to at finance committee as well. And I think we can't say it enough. So thank you for asking that.
Brief if, if
I will, I will, right, right. I, I always try. I don't know if I always do it, but I try. All of these factors, you have to remember a budget development process is all happening all at the same time, right? So we're having budget developers, our principals and directors, give us their wish lists, their wants, their needs. We are taking current staffing, all of the expenditures that we, we have, analyzing that to see, did we budget enough or not? And we're rolling those into the next year budget. It goes into a massive data portal, right? So we're building a budget from the expenditure side of the aisle. At the same time, we are meeting with the Tompkins County Department of Assessment. We are hearing from state legislator groups and getting the budget from Governor Hokel to tell us what our state aid runs are. We are looking with, at our treasurer, with our treasurer, at all of our revenues and hearing from places like Cornell when they increase their obligation to us and give us, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more. We're looking at our interest rates and we bring in folks to come to finance and talk about our investments, what's legal and what, how we've been able to leverage right now those opportunities through treasures and securities and things. And we're putting all of that revenue piece of the aisle together while the expenditure budget is going up, right? Many years ago, the board asked us to start to look at when the tax cap calculation penalties sunset. So if you didn't stay within the tax cap, there used to be penalties on taxpayers, right? Which meant that you didn't get a rebate check back. If one of your taxing entities went over the cap, you as a, as a homeowner or a business owner or whatever withheld, your rebate check was withheld because we weren't stewards, right, of the, of the money for that, for that particular period. That then sunset, because they said school districts can't do that anymore. We actually, there are school districts that have to go over the cap. They knew this was happening. So that sunset. We started to look at what we would bring in with a levy calculation at the cap and what we would bring in if we knew that there was a certain rate that taxpayers wanted to pay or felt comfortable paying. And our goal was always to try to decrease it over the years. What was the difference in revenue looking at a rate lens or a tax cap levy lens? And so that is how a couple of years ago, we ended up locking in that rate at sixteen eighty-four because we had been doing our homework and educating the community about levy and rate and how those two things played together. And so this year, when we started to look at our budget, we were actually well over a hundred and twenty million. When, I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy million when we put our budget together. What you see and what Dr. Brown is proposing is millions of dollars of work already and very challenging conversations with budget developers who have innovations or excitements. And we said, you actually have to be okay with what you have right now. If you notice, there's not a lot of growth, there's catching up of things that we've done. But there's not like, here's the innovation line, this is something brand new that we're doing. Because we really had budget developers sort of try to trim their budgets. The two exceptions to that are operations and maintenance because we do have things that have not been attended to, like boilers that we have to replace. And also special, special education because that is driven by IEPs and 504s. You're going to see the biggest growth in those two areas. So those things are all happening at the same time. When we came to, to the board and we started looking at that rate levy calculation, the state aid being less than in terms of foundation aid, that's when we started to really look at saying, what would that look like? If we could at least do the taxpayers, we can hold, hold that flat so that you knew what to budget for next year.
This saves me asking this later when I plan to ask it. You've made reference to department heads and principals requesting things that, that you all, and I have to say you all because it wasn't us.
That's right.
Decided that this wasn't a good time to ask for it, it was too expensive or whatever. Could you give us a couple of examples of that kind of thing? Because what we get is this somewhat accomplished presentation. I won't say somewhat, an accomplished presentation. And we don't hear the things that you said no to. And I think that would be nice to hear a few of those.
I'll start and Ms. Talk, can you jump in?
Sure.
There's been a request to have associate principals at every building at the elementary level. There've been requests to have district-wide coordination. I'm just going to focus on administrative because that's the place people always want us to cut. But I've only heard about requests for additional administrators. At this table, folks have asked for district-wide MAP coordinators. We've been asked to bring back the instructional coaching model that we used about a decade ago where we had, I think at the time, twelve educators out of the classroom providing one coaching cycles to buildings. The coaching cycle, that would add an additional FTE as far as our teachers. We've been asked to minimize the length of routes in our transportation department. You've heard here where some of our routes are sometimes ninety minutes or more. Some folks think that's absurd. Some folks want us to pick up at doorsteps and not within the, not with the exception of a mile or two mile. I think we hit a mile now, Mr. Van Kie, in a mile. So we've been asked a lot of, those are some of our examples. But look, you have, you have an all-star list too. Give me, if you would share some of the requests you've seen.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's a, a pretty, pretty accurate list. I think, you know, there's a there's oftentimes when we meet with folks and we ask folks what they need, there's a real range of things that folks indicate that they need, right? And I just, I just want to elevate that, you know, the folks who are, who are coming to us or they're in those meetings, asking for these, right? They're asking for them because their communities are also asking for them, right? So when I was a principal, an elementary principal, and I was approaching the folks at, at this table, you know, it was because of either the needs of my building or the requests or the curiosities or the concerns, right? And so as, as building leaders or department leaders, we're often stewards of, you know, and we're budget developers who try to support an entire community and be responsive to their wishes and their requests. So I also just want to be really clear that, you know, it's not just coming out of thin air, right? There's, there's usually a good reason behind the request. And it's not really fun to say no, we can't do this right now. But we are, we have made a number of shifts from the, from the original asks, right? That one seventy number is much lower than it originally was when we started putting together this final number.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So for folks who may not have been at finance or may not have seen a finance meeting, there are other areas where we could hold everything flat and it still would require an increase in expenditures. Can you give a couple of examples of increasing expenditures that not necessarily the, the district has no control over? And I know one example that we have, rightfully so, because the board made a conscious choice to do so, which I applaud, but it's retiree healthcare, which is an increase in expense. Even if we keep everything exactly the same, it's going to cost the district more to provide that level of care. And I know not everyone's still happy with that, but that's just an example of that I'm thinking. Are there other examples that we could share? I know, again, that have been discussed at finance, but can we share those here?
Sure. Let's talk about utility. Just to put a number to the retiree healthcare, rough number is around three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. That was a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar, thousand-dollar expenditure and increase. But you want to talk about some increase.
I mean, I mean, I think the most, the most obvious, just so, you know, the community probably already knows this, but so there are contractual agreements that the school district has entered into with bargaining units. And those are guaranteed to the folks, they have to, right? They have to receive the increases. And so like for one bargaining unit, next year it's four percent, right? And so without any change at all in the number of full-time equivalents, right, of FTE, no more belly buttons, right? That's a four percent increase.
Yeah, but also it isn't just retiree health insurance that the district has increased costs. It's all of our employees' health insurance.
And then I will say, if you, you know, if you look at some of the fuel costs, right, or things that, you know, that have been out there in relationship to finance and was on the last, attached to the last board agenda, you'll, you're looking at some of the utilities and the fuel costs, et cetera, they're up ten percent. Just the, the cost of the contract is ten percent more.
And that's why I was looking for a cool soundbite with this particular chart that is now in public. Nothing, folks have not asked for anything to come off of the red list and the yellow list is increasing significantly. So the priority that what people are asking for, we, people want more of. And that yellow, if you can see it on your device there, healthcare benefits, personal development, contractual obligations, debt service. BOCs, BOCs went up significantly this year, our BOC services, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to speak to one thing, which would be, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's done on the budget. And it's obviously very complicated. And we don't know all the ins and outs. But I, I guess I, I do hear from a lot of different community members who will come, you know, just approaching me, talking with me about this. They're concerned about how, you know, how much increase they're going to be experiencing in the assessed values of their homes, which are going to translate to higher taxes. And they see a large increase, I guess a relatively large increase of almost eight percent. And, you know, they're very concerned about how they're going to, you know, absorb that increase. And, you know, they're wondering and hoping that there might be a way to have that eight percent reduced, even if it was by a few percent. And, you know, if there's a way to do that and there are some items that are somewhat items that could come out of the budget, I think a lot of people would appreciate that relief. And I say that with the understanding of all the complexities of the fact that things have become more expensive and most organizations' budgets are increasing, although this is, this seemed like a larger-than-average increase. So I'm just raising that point.
A response, my perspective, I share in the concerns and the frustrations and I share the emotions connected to assessment increases. And also, I guess I'm uniquely positioned to say this. I've heard those concerns and I've shared those concerns and frustrations each year I've been here. Because each year, there's a significant number of people and homeowners in our community who have their properties reassessed. And most times that is significantly more. And we've had some folks have their assessments go down. I, I rarely hear from those people, but each year I hear from folks. And when we propose this, that's why my team knows, I don't sleep much leading up to this presentation because I know for many people, they are going to grapple with the same emotions I have when it says in a high-tax state that I'm going to tax you more. When I looked at my board president in my first board meeting, he asked that we have a zero percent increase. Remember that day? And that we cut taxes and I've tried my best. And every time I don't, I feel the emotional response that comes along with disappointing someone who wants us to reduce it. And I will say, our community wants some things. We had a, 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 it's a important time for us, we're at an inflection point. I see this budget setting this community up for the next generation of learners. We've talked about what it would look like for the next ten years here with the capital project. I see what we can do for salaries and compensation in our programs and the way we're going to stabilize the tax rate, setting us up for a significant number of years. And, you know, I like to bring my mom and daddy into these conversations. My dad would always say, nothing worth having is going to be easy. So this is going to be hard on us and let's just sit and grapple with that because it will mean more taxes and people paying more. And why to do what we've been asked to do? So yeah, there's some ways, and again, we're proposing this. And this is what we think our community needs, which is we think our learners need. And we know it will be hard, but we know we can do this. However, there are some areas where we can make some adjustments. We can talk about what we do to, with fund balance. We can talk about what we do with our plan compensation increases. If wishing to hear a recommendation from me about what we can do to adjust, to minimize what we, is already going to we could go to the tax cap at three percent. And based on what I'm seeing in the data, most people who had their properties reassessed will still see a property tax increase. So how much of an increase is what we're talking about now? And how much we can move that dial using our fund balances? The compensation strategy is what we could engage in. But again, I propose something I think is fair. I think it's something that will set us up, but I'm open to the direction of the board to what we do to adjust.
I was just going to say, on the topic of assessment, I heard Dr. Krent Weiss mentioned an eight, eight percent increase. But I just wanted to kind of share my own experience. So my own house was assessed for thirty percent more this year. And guaranteed, I don't know much about assessments, but that does seem like an astronomically large increase. And this isn't just me, like multiple people in my neighborhood are being assessed for thirty, thirty-five percent more than their house was previously assessed, which seems like a very, very high amount. And in terms of like the property tax increase, without that translates to, I mean, it's a pretty significant amount of money. So, yeah, and, and this is a concern I've, I've heard from other people as well. So, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. When I heard that eight percent number, I was, I was thinking about kind of what I've heard in my own neighborhood, like thirty percent, it's, it's a big number. It's, it's a big number, very big number.
Yeah, the, the eight percent was the increase in the, in the tax levy.
Oh, okay. Well, I was talking about assessments, sorry.
You're bringing up a good point though. I think folks need to hear us say this. Um, we have not, to this point, created a budget based on individual property value assessments, real assessments. I don't know even, I don't even know how we would do that. Um, and to stabilize the rate and do this in a way where people can make sense of it. So yes, individuals have seen significant property tax assessments increase. But I need folks to hear this from me. Our school district is not responsible for tax assessment increases. I do also know there's an appeal process and even if we were to plan for what folks got in the mail this week or last week, that may shift. So it is inappropriate for us to plan a budget based on individual property, even a large swath of property tax assessment, we increases. Period.
I, I'll share personally, I'm, I'm struggling as well. Uh, I am one of those thirty-five percent increases in my assessment from one year to the next. Uh, and, um, while I understand partially, uh, how we arrive at that, given the significant growth in, um, development and home sales values as someone who randomly goes to, uh, open houses just because I can walk through people's homes when they're on for sale. Um, but, uh, trying to understand that, that significant growth. And then what is the, um, actual dollar impact, right? We're talking, um, you know, close to two hundred dollars, uh, a month, depending on, you know, where we're at and sometimes for some families it's more than that. So, so it, it's real and I'm sitting here trying to reconcile my own personal finance and stake in it as well as my role as a board member of long-term health and fiscal viability for the school district. And I haven't come down yet on where that is, but, um, it's important for folks to know that I think many of us at this table are having those same emotional responses to the reality of, um, more taxation. Um, and, uh, I had made a quick, um, passing comment to, to Dr. Brown and, um, it may not be wise to say in public, but I will take the risk. Um, I think it would be wise at some point in time for all of the taxing entities in Tompkins County to sit down together and have a conversation because it's not just a rise in school district taxes. It then also means often a rise in county taxes and then I happen to live in the city and then city taxes as well. And so I think what we're hearing is people feeling on multiple levels, um, in a, in a difficult year. Um, and then also realizing is this, what is the short-term impact, which is going to be difficult? Um, and what is the long-term viability? Is this a wise, long-term investment to make? Is where I'm still trying to explore some of the data, much the way which Jill has been asking some of these questions about where we, where we find ourselves.
You guys have mentioned the fund balance a couple of times. Sorry, thank you, Sean. I feel it, yeah. Um, so what is, so you mentioned the amount we took out of the fund balance. So what is the actual balance of fund balance?
Sure, that's, that's wonderful. I, and I am prepared to answer that. Um, so what Dr. Brown's slide showed you, right? Is what is called allocated, um, fund balance or assigned fund balance. Depending on, if you look at our audit report or you, you hear when people speak about fund balance. Um, just a little overview, fund balance is different from reserves. We also use reserves to balance our budget. Reserves are used for very particular purposes, right? So we pay, um, folks that retire, their benefits packages as they retire, we pay from that and that's a particular savings account that we use. We have allocated, um, reserves from the health insurance reserve so that we can cover the cost of shifts. If we, you know, um, hear the retirees and make changes, we, we're going to pay for, we'll use that fund balance for that or anything that might come our way. So reserves are part of balancing the budget. Fund balance that is allocated is not earmarked for a particular purpose. It's used for general purposes. It's just a general savings account. For this particular year, we appropriated in our fund balance, as Dr. Brown said, or allocated about seven million dollars, right? Seven million forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Um, we still have, if you look at our audit reports, instead of appropriated fund balance, there's unappropriated or unallocated fund balance. There is a calculation that the state comptroller makes us do and you cannot go over a certain threshold. You have to, if, if you, if you don't want to get written up by the comptroller and you don't want to say that you're not stewards of, you know, fiscally, um, positive stewards of taxpayer funds, you cannot exceed four percent of your budget amount to put that, um, that general fund balance with no strings attached, attached aside. And so we're just shy of that four percent, right? So we have another, um, unappropriated fund balance of about, uh, six million dollars. That's, and that's in the audit report, you can see that. Um, and so again, we can, we, there have been years where, um, Angela, this is a shout out to you, Angela Jordan at Finance, um, almost passed out at the table when Eldred said, just put all the fund balance in and balance the budget because we need it. This is a bad year, we need it, we need it. And Angela was like, uh, right? And, and, um, and Angela also was super bright and smart and I'm really glad that she had dialogue with Eldred. And we said, you know, you don't really want to do that, um, in one year because if you spend it and the next year you go into negotiations or you have, um, a vehicle go through your wall in a building or you have an underground trench warmer and, and the, and the high school, we have to get a, you know, um, a generator on a flatbed truck from Buffalo overnight to the district to run power in the high school. And these are three true stories, right? You want to have some fund balance so that the board, if you have to go over your budgeted amount, the board actually is allowed to allocate from that unassigned fund balance to help you if there's an emergency or there's something that you need to do.
Beyond the four percent?
So it's, it's, we are only allowed to, we are only allowed to reserve up to that four percent. You can go over, but you're going, you will be, you are not good fiscal stewards if you do that, according to the comptroller.
If, if, okay, so when you said that we're just shy of fourth percent.
That's right, we're like three point eight.
That means.
That's six million dollars is three point eight eight percent of our budget. It's in, you can look at it that in the audit report or that's unallocated. We can add that, we can add that amount to the five million that we're assuming as we close the end of the year, right? That's seven million dollars that we've allocated to balance our budget for this current year. We, if we spend into that, it's that much less that we have, right? So if, if we end the year and we actually have to use fund balance to, to pay for our operations, it's that much less money. We have been, as you, again, you can look in our audit report, we've gotten close. We've gotten like within a hundred thousand dollars of just like almost spending into our fund balance. There have been years when, when Dr. Brown started and then two years later when I came on, um, that we were using fund balance to sustain operations. And that is the year that we went over the tax cap. Um, the first time that Ithaca City School District had to go to the tax cap because we could no longer pay the bills with what we were receiving in the levy at the cap and what we were receiving in state aid. And so fund balance was bridging that gap, not just to, but to balance your budget, but we were actually spending it. And so we rebuilt our fund balance now up to that healthier level. And it is there if we determine, if the board determines that this is, like, this is the, the year that we want to use that to balance the budget. Just know then if we spend it, it will not be there for next year. And so those, instead of looking at the expenditure side of the aisle and making, um, decreases in the operations and just increase, keeping that increase in the revenue, you will have a double problem now. Now you've got a compounded problem the next year. All those, those expenses that we know are going up for this fiscal year will continue to go up for next fiscal year. So you'll have to do, you know, a deeper level of cut or a deeper, deeper level of impact of the operations than if we were to pace it for this year.
It may go without saying, but using fund balance is a single-year solution. It is not sustainable. That money does not regenerate the following year. And as you said, it's a double, in many regards, it could be a double hit. Maybe something the board wants to consider, I want to be clear about that.
Absolutely.
It's, it's a, in essence, it's a double hit. You take it for this year, but then you're down the following year and it's, and the operation still for the most part remain the same and that's just some significant shifts in the operation.
That message to me would be to, uh, present a budget next year or this year with some staffing shifts um, and programmatic shifts so that we're getting back into a sustainable approach.
And to be clear, the five million that's on the slide is what we're estimating that we will actually spend out of the fund balance for next year? Or it's just what we are appropriating in case it's needed?
It is the latter. It, we are appropriating it to balance the budget. New York State requires that we have a balanced budget, right? And so again, this is, these are preliminary, this is preliminary information because we still, we don't know the total assessed value, right? When, we don't know the state aid amounts, that's going to be supposedly due to us on April first. Um, there are, there are new, you know, the state doesn't get any kind of like consequences if they're not on time, their budget, so.
Okay, then for previous years, since these are, we know those budgets, these are the actual amounts of the fund balance which we needed to spend in order to maintain operations or those were just the previously estimated or previously appropriated amounts.
These are previously appropriated amounts.
Okay.
That in some years, if we were to layer the audit report on this, some years we dipped into those amounts.
Some of them.
Some years we didn't use them and that's why we were able to sort of carry it forward. Um, in these next couple of years, we sort of carried around, you know, I mean, we did get a lot higher last year mainly because if you remember when you were at the table, we were very concerned about the ending of ARP-ESR gear and missing programs and operations that we had funded with those one-time federal funds and we wanted to give ourselves some breathing room if we needed that sort of, of those supports post-COVID. So that's why we did, we intentionally had higher levels of fund balance those two years. That is not something that we think we want to do because tho- those federal monies are gone. So we will be dipping into those.
Yeah.
We absolutely will be dipping into those to pay for operations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That was helpful.
Additional questions are coming from the board?
I have a few specific questions about budget, proposed budget items, but I don't know if this is the time for that or if you have, wanted to finish your presentation.
We're done, we're taking questions in direction.
Like the end, but, um, let's see. Could you tell us a little bit about the attorney fees? Is that a two hundred and twenty thousand, I think, is that a retainer or?
That is, yep, and that has not changed for, my goodness, probably, oh, maybe even, yeah, it might even be longer than five years. So that's, that's, um, we, we have a, we have a attorney on retainer that covers pretty much everything except for litigious, like when things go to litigation, those would get billed more on an hourly rate.
We have a firm on retainer.
We have a firm. I'm so sorry if I misspoke.
No, 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 I'm saying, I think sometimes people want to put it to a person, but I won't.
I apologize. No, we haven't, we haven't, it's like, it's a national, I didn't, are they international? No, they're national, they're a national firm. Um, and the one area of school law, that's who we call a lot, but we also call their environmental attorney and their contract attorney and their labor law attorney. And, um, Bob and I made a list once, we were at one point in time dealing with, it was like twenty-two different attorneys. Um, at one point, depending on the topic, right? They, they all have their, um, right?
And do we have a sense of, I, I presume that that reflects roughly how many hours of time we use with them every? I mean, where does the two twenty come from?
Um, so, so every now, I think it's every four years or five years, we go out for a request for proposals. So I'd have to, Jill, I'd have to pull that contract up, but, um, the retainer piece, it's, it's essentially just as, as much as we need to. I mean, in any given day, we would call our firm between all of us, it, it, it could be upwards of twenty.
I would just say I get, we get a monthly, uh, detailed report. Um, and the retainer is the way to go. Because if we were being charged à la carte by hour, it would be three times that much.
Okay, that's, I was curious about that. We reclassified several clerical staff for increased efficiency. Um, can you tell us a little bit about that? It looked like there were increases in salary that went along with that.
There, yes, significant increases in salary with that, absolutely. Um, and I think that there was an analysis done. Remember that, um, the clerical unit is mostly part of employees' association. Um, and then the others are in a managerial confidential. And that's, uh, terms and conditions with the board directly through policy. Civil service gives us the titles, which are often exceptionally outdated. The, um, typist, senior typist, clerk, school secretary titles were all analyzed and I think that they were like nineteen seventy-eight was the last time they were looked at. They actually talked about, um, you know, typewriter and carbon copies and things like that. The language is pretty incredible. You can see them on the city civil service. The administrative assistant position was something that we actually looked into a couple of years ago. Um, and there were particular departments that actually needed that level of clerical to do things like budgeting, promotional materials, engagement with community, handling parent phone calls, right? All the things that's beyond just like putting something in a Google calendar. And so that analysis is done across the district. People had to do many steps to get to be an administrative assistant. You have to take a test and pass. You have to, um, uh, fill out a form that we had internally that showed and justified why your job was different from what you initially was hired at. And then that went to human resources and also conversation with the EA leadership. And then that request per, um, the board would vote on those in the personnel reports. So you've seen those transitions in personnel reports for the past about two years.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Including on today's.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, how many assistant associate principals do we have currently in the district?
I had to do a, we count on our fingers.
It's beautiful how I'll forgive you, close your eyes.
Yeah. Start counting.
They're pitching people.
Don't close your eyes, I'm going to look for the spreadsheet. No, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Nine.
Nine, close enough, okay.
At all of them, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed one of them, I noticed one of them was listed under miscellaneous district wide. Did you notice that or is there a reason for that?
Is that a substitute administrator?
Uh, Jill, can you tell me the page?
Oh, no. It was, it was in the original two pages we got.
Okay, so we, we do, we do have, I mean, we, we do have positions sometimes that fall to a district, um, code. Um, I'm trying to think which AP though that would be. I don't have a district.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't with a school, which was interesting. It was under district wide miscellaneous.
Okay.
It could be because we fund it through, um, title or some other code or brand or something like that.
Okay.
Um, we can look that brand.
Right, and we're all district coded, right? So we don't fall to a building, so.
No, that made sense.
It could be any one of us as well.
Right.
Um, so, so for example, um, all the executive teams would be coded to, to the district code.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's the ones I had, thank you.
Oh, great, thank you, Jill. Jill, thank you very much for looking at that document, I really appreciate it.
Oh, I felt that I should.
Yeah.
Don't worry, we'll get that to you on.
Yes.
Additional questions from the board? Dr. Brown, tell us, uh, our timeline.
Uh, the next step would be discussion and/or adoption of the proposed budget so that we can begin a frequently asked question. Uh, instance on our webpage, we can start the promotion, we can prepare for the community conversations. Um, and that's what typically happens, we spend a month, month and a half or so engaging our community in conversations about what the board has adopted as a funding request. Now, we, our next board meeting is the second, third week, because of spring break, the third weekend, April, right?
April sixteenth.
April sixteenth. The board can adopt then, but there has to be an adoption prior to April twenty-ninth, Ms. Burba? Or the sooner than that?
It's, it's late April, so the property tax report card is due at the very end of April. So, um, up until, I think it's like, if, we might have, we might be able to squeeze out through like April twenty-sixth. Tricia is the final day, right?
Oh.
I think that's the.
So we have our next board meeting that's scheduled and if we need to do, in the past, we've done special board meetings if we need to, to grapple with this more. I would ask, I mean, we have, uh, next week we're working. I know there's a break, a recess for students, but our team is working. And if there are things the board wishes for us to work on next week, I would welcome that, those requests now, while we would have some time.
And we also, um, the, Dr. Brown, just to add, um, the board graciously switched, um, policy and human resources with finance and facilities so that finance and facilities actually is occurring on April ninth, knowing that we needed an additional meeting for, potentially for, um, conversation. So thank you to Emily and Tricia for making that happen and thank you to the board for switching that because it's valuable use of our time during this like sort of condensed budget opportunity to move that forward.
And we'll clarify the dates on the agenda in a minute because they're not, not accurate. But in terms of April ninth would be the next finance committee.
Sean, are you speaking to the mic? Sorry.
I. April ninth will be the next finance committee meeting. Um, and I'm looking to my board colleagues to see, uh, if we want to begin to plan. if we want to begin to plan to anticipate a vote for whatever the whatever the budget will be on the sixteenth, realizing that would give us just over a month before the, we're asking the community to vote. And I'd imagine we'd like to give people as much time to dissect the budget, to ask questions. So I don't, I'm looking to my board colleagues if that seems to be an appropriate timetable for us to consider. As Dr. Brown said, yes, I think what I have in my notes was the twenty-sixth would be the absolute last date, which would require a special board meeting, which we've done in the past as well. It does get a little disruptive to the community members who may not be maybe expecting it on a particular Tuesday. But we have a great communications team. We'd be able to get that word out. But to board colleagues, how would you like to, is there a timetable that you'd like to proceed that would make it most efficient for all of us?
I feel comfortable with the earlier date. I think I've had great response when I've had questions.
It would be the absolute last date that the board would have to vote on a budget.
Earlier date you proposed was April.
April sixteenth. We have the finance committee meeting on the ninth. The sixteenth is the next board meeting, full voting board meeting after this evening. And that's usually around when we have done it. It's usually been about a month out that we've tried to give the community an idea of what the board, what the propositions will be. And we're getting, we're getting closer and closer. Any other feedback from folks?
Yeah, I think I have a suggestion that my board colleagues, if you have any more detailed questions after you spend time poring through the budget, send them along before April eighth. So our administrators have a chance to have answers prepared. So when we meet in finance, we can quickly get through even some difficult conversations if we give them a heads up. And if there are still more questions after that, Sean said we have another bite of the apple later in April. What will bog us down is if folks aren't in a position to do their homework and come to the meeting asking questions. That will, we've just seen that slow down the process before, so we got to do some homework. For the finance committee members, we spent all year educating each other about just these topics so we would have a sense of what these numbers mean, right? How we spend the money, how we try to save the money, how we try to look under sofas, how we try to do the best job we can, given our limited time and resources as volunteers, understanding these these numbers. Our other colleagues have not had that opportunity, haven't been with us in all those meetings, so I would encourage you all also reach out to Garrett, myself, and Karen. We have been there in the trenches. We have gone over these numbers with as fine a tooth comb as we have been able to, so please reach out. Adam and Katie and Jill have been our colleagues from afar for most of the financial conversations. So I feel we have a pretty good sense of what's in our ballpark. I still have questions myself about what's in their ballpark, but I tend to like to see those answers play out in classrooms.
So from what I'm hearing, we will tentatively try to approach that schedule as discussed, finance on the ninth. I put something in front of the board as an official voting resolution on the sixteenth. Should something take place, we'll make adjustments, but that's the way in which we'll proceed, both for our community to know. And to Mr. Harris's point about board members doing homework and asking questions, humbly for our community members that may have questions, please send them to the board members, send them to the Let's Talk portal. Ask your questions now, and we'll be able to get answers as best we can at either one of those meetings. The more time we have, the better. More information we can gather to provide folks with the information that they're requesting. We're good for this agenda? Good for now. I'm going to use Jill's, we're good for now. Thank you all very much for the presentation. Thank you for the information. We will move on to our next agenda item. Folks are good for us just pushing through. I realize it's eight thirty-seven. Should we just continue on with the agenda? Okay, fantastic. Well, let's see how this next item goes.
We did not put it down.
It's just a discussion.
It's again, just a discussion.
Fantastic.
If you have more time to discuss, if you want.
Agenda item eleven point two, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic calendar.
Hello.
Hello.
Again, so we have received no new feedback about next year's academic calendar through Let's Talk. I've had some individual conversations with folks asking for, you know, shifts in conference days, either like doing them all during one period of time during the school year or separating out district-wide professional learning days from caregiver conference days. And, you know, we're we're, again, there's no such thing as a perfect calendar. And as as Dr. Brown often says, if you have it, show it to us, right? So all that to say, it's, you know, it seems in general that the community appears to either be relatively saturated with calendar discussion as per, you know, previous discussions about this year, or, you know, there's there's a relative okay from our community. I didn't want to push you all to a decision. So we're happy to put it on for April sixteenth if you'd like to think about it more or gather more feedback yourselves, et cetera.
Reactions, thoughts, comments, board members?
I guess, so we received some of the Let's Talk feedback a couple of weeks ago when it started coming in, specifically related to this year, right? Separate from the April eighth decision. Have there been any adjustments since the last draft that we saw?
We did make an adjustment to the LACS component, as we discussed at the last board meeting, including all of the dates that are specific to Lehman Alternative Community School. In trying to do that, there are some things that are very specific to middle school, some things that are very specific to high school. There are some things that are very specific to just sixth grade because of education law and the number of minutes that they have to participate. There are trip suites that are different depending on the trip that you're on. Caregiver conferences are different depending on what your family group is. So we thought it best to direct people directly to the LACS webpage moving forward and that all of those would be there. So that was, that was a big change. The big change.
And just in terms of planning, I know that we've gone through a couple of iterations of the calendar this year. But is there a particular date by which we would like to publish or have the board vote on the calendar for next academic year?
Mid-April would be ideal because then we can finalize the payroll calendar.
Does that work for everyone on the board? Fantastic. We'll follow up with some additional information, but thank you very much for the calendar. It brings us to our last agenda item, which are committee updates. I also want to remind folks again that our communication team does a great job of putting summaries of all committees on the ICSD website. They're relatively easy to find. You can also Google them. But the one to two-page summaries do a great job of capturing what's been the main discussion item, so I would recommend folks do that. In addition, we'll go through briefly, and Moira, you have the first two.
Yes, so I'll just speak to our meeting at the beginning of this month on March fifth. One of the things that we spent a lot of time with was we had guests from SUNY Cortland who are both connected to the Department of Education, Andrew Thomas and Andrea La Chance, and they made a presentation and we had a lot of good dialogue about what they're doing and ideas for doing more in terms of enhancing our connection with SUNY Cortland to enable them to provide a and this was the HR committee. Thank you, Karen, totally identified the committee. To, they could help provide a pipeline for teachers coming into the district because they have a strong Department of Education. And then policy is the other committee. And at our last meeting, Zach gave us an overview. We took a look at our tech policies, and this was prompted by, you know, some concerns expressed by a parent during public comment. So we had a lively discussion about what's in the policy, but then much, much broader than policy, what's happening that is concerning. And we also, there are two brand-new policies that are in draft form that we've had some good discussion and taking a look at. One is a policy for independent study specific to Ithaca High School and a policy for LACS enrollment. And then we have passed and adopted some very minor changes to some policies in the six thousand and eight thousand series. What they really needed was just some updating because times have changed.
Great. Thank you, Moira. Dr. Tripp, facilities.
We met on March nineteenth. Our first commenter was Armin Hurek, who works with the district's Climate Action and Sustainability Group. And he urged us as a board to avoid climate doomism thinking because that's what leads to paralysis and inactivity. He suggested the district needs a comprehensive plan that syncs with city, state, and national plans as we move forward, looking at carbon reduction and other sustainable efforts. Dr. Bryman reported briefly on the Spork launch at LACS. And it's coming up at Boynton or will be happening as we speak. We also had a follow-up on a request that a public commenter had made regarding the concerns about artificial turf on the football field. And I had asked for some background on that, not on the problems with artificial turf, but on our turf in particular. And it turns out that that was done most recently as part of the twenty nineteen capital project. And that turf that we have currently is under warranty for twelve years. And there is no other artificial turf in the district. And our sense on the committee was that there was no, no need to change that at this point or move forward on the artificial turf issue at this point. Fall Creek Playground update, co-design process with Dr. Loback and the IC students. Dr. Loback will be joining us in April with a design brief regarding the updated Fall Creek or new Fall Creek Playground possibilities. Another thing we discussed was the possibility of a district solar farm. And the bad news is it looks like the Danby site is not ideal because of transmission. Yeah, the problems with that site. There is a possibility of augmenting our Bostwick Road solar capacity should we prove, but that will be an ongoing discussion, but I thought I'd let people know that's something we're thinking about would like to see happen at some point. And we also had our usual reports from Cindy Doucette from campus and Heather Williams from the district. And all systems seem to be go at the moment, so join us at our next facilities committee if you'd like to know more.
April ninth, next facilities. Finance, Mr. Harris.
Well, you have heard much of what we have been discussing tonight presented by our professionals. The only thing I that's relevant to add is we had a great question in the beginning by Rich DiPaolo about some of these specifics, and he asked some pretty poignant things. Why haven't we increased the fund balance? What happens if this budget goes down, right? So we have some really insightful dedicated people in this community asking us tough questions. To that, I will say generally, although, you know, I have to individualize my responses to folks, we are playing a balancing act on this side of the table. I am always comfortable saying that my chips are on the table for kids. They are our number-one constituency. That may be difficult to hear for taxpayers. That may be difficult to hear for seniors. That may be difficult to hear for parents and families. That may be difficult to hear for contractors. That may be difficult to hear for our staff. What are we here to do primarily? To educate children in the best of our capacity. Look at this room we're in. Look at Maresco Field. Look at the pool. Look at the new tech centers we're planning. The money we're asking for is going into trying to do the best we can in classrooms and spaces for children. I'm willing to have any detailed conversation with any taxpayer about their bills. That is tough. But I'm going to remind folks again who our number-one constituency is in this community, in this role. Other thing I'll add is we have been having our professionals come and present their budget press, right? Show us the inside of how the sausage is made. Show us the little green man behind the curtain. The last meeting was Daphne Shalula, who came and spoke to us about the arts, and who did a fantastic job of just what we're talking about, right? Daphne convinced us that there's a way to do at least her job without significant personnel increases because of some third-party arrangements she's been able to make around the Bowseys in town. That gives our little people access to the instruments they need so they could be practiced by middle school, so they can enter choir, into the orchestra, into the band at the high school, where previously they had been excluded because they just didn't have their accumulated talent. We have also heard from transportation. We have heard from special education. Yes, this is probably our fifth presentation from our executives, so again, whatever happens with the budget, up, down, around, we didn't start this in a vacuum. We didn't start this conversation yesterday. We started this conversation, the first finance meeting after the new board members were assigned to their roles.
Thank you, Eldred, and Adam, Crichton Committee.
Yeah, we've been having some good conversations. You know, all our meetings start off with with Dr. Brown talking about the intersect of excellence and equity, which I really appreciate talking about that topic. We have a running segment where we hear some ITA perspectives, and Catherine Gennara comes down and kind of catches us up. During the last meeting, we talked a little bit about seven versus eight-period days, and we had a conversation about that. We spent a lot of time talking about middle school math. Eldred and Garrick and I had an opportunity to go around, visit a lot of different classrooms in the middle school, kind of see some of the heterogeneous classrooms in action, and it was very impressive. Following up that conversation, which has been kind of going on for a couple of meetings, we talked a little bit today, actually a lot today, about equitable grading and some of the different ways in which standards-based grading operates in the middle school and how it works. Those are some of the, some of the highlights.
Fantastic. Well, thank of all our chairs for committees. I'm aware of the additional responsibility and work that that entails as well. Thanks to all board members for your participation on these committees. The work is never-ending, and so that concludes our meeting, and we'll see you with more work after the break. All right, good folks. Have a good evening.